Please stand for the invocation. Let us pray in the many names people of the world call you. As we come before you tonight, we are truly thankful and relieved at the near miss of what appeared to be a violent storm aimed directly at us. We are not only thankful for being spared, but for the men and women who stood ready to keep us safe if we weren't. Comfort those in our city who are saddened by a loss due to natural death, expected perhaps, but we are never ready for the separation. And as we come before you tonight, give us the grace to listen with our hearts and to act with our souls and mind that we might offer hope to all who have placed their trust in us. And may all who are listening tonight put into practice the words of Mother Teresa. Not all of us can do great things, but we can do small things with great love. And id mubarak to our Muslim neighbors as they participate in id al arha. And all God's people said, amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. I see that we have no recognitions and proclamations. We have no presentations. We have no board appointments tonight. But we do, and we will, go right into our consideration of the minutes from the previous meeting. Thank you, Mr. Schisler. And do we have a second? Mrs. Abel. Okay, so all in favor, prove the minute, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I do have one person who wants to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, and I see that's Ms. Allison Fernandez.
Good evening, council members, Allison Fernandez. I would like to speak with you tonight about the School Support Committee. I understand that you will be appointing people at a future board meeting. I am not going to be able to attend that meeting, and I have submitted my name to be chosen for that committee. So I just wanted to address you right now before we go to Yellowstone. So a lot of you may know, I've been very involved in school issues in this community for a long time, very passionate about public education and providing quality education to our residents, both as a parent and a city council person in the past, and obviously a very active PTA member in the past. And I feel very strongly about what this community has to offer. We have so, we are such a great place to live. I grew up here, and when I had my family, we moved back here, and when my eldest son was a baby. So I want other families to see everything that we have to give as well. We have an amazing fire department, police department, city services, recreation, especially, we have wonderful parks and recreation space. And we need to have equally good schools, and we need to have residents who will speak up and advocate for the citizens of Temple Terrace. And I'd like to request that when the appointment time comes, that you give me a chance and appoint me to that committee. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you'd like to talk to me after, at any time during the meeting, I know Cheryl and other people have my phone number, pretty much everyone up there, and I'm happy to answer any questions. So appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. And stay as long as you'd like. Okay, we have, anyone else in the public have anything to say? No, moving forward then.
There's somebody else who wants to talk.
Do you have another? Yes? Okay. All right, I will allow that. Yeah, absolutely. Please, come forward. Now's the time. As long as it's not on the agenda, this is your time to speak.
Thank you. So, good evening, Vice Mayor Donahue, council members, Ms. Abel, Mr. Chambers, Mr. Donahue, and Mr. Schisler. Hope all of you are doing well. My name is Ash Bagdi. I'm here representing Dr. Kiran C. Patel and the Drs. Kiran and Pallavi Patel Family Foundation. Dr. Patel and I have worked closely to found the Dr. Kiran C. Patel High School and now the Dr. Kiran C. Patel Elementary School, which is opening in August 22. Patel High School was built in record time and is architecturally one of the most beautiful high schools in Florida, if not the United States. The middle and elementary schools are equally as beautiful, paving the way for the already highly regarded and established Terrace Community Middle School to relocate to our campus for the upcoming school year. We are extremely pleased to have our schools so near to Temple Terrace, a city we have come to admire and have fallen in love with. As a means to alleviate traffic and as we truly believe in Temple Terrace and are excited about our campus and the potential of the 27 acres that is north of our campus, we invested one and a half million dollars, over one and a half million dollars towards adding lanes, signals at the intersection of 301 and Rollison Ranch Road. We did that proactively. Our near-term goal is to seek annexation into the city of Temple Terrace for our school campus. Over the years, Drs. Kiran and Pallavi Patel Family Foundation have supported various education and healthcare initiatives in the Tampa Bay community. Dr. Kiran and Pallavi Patel have contributed over $250 million in the greater Tampa Bay community, including Performing Arts Center, University of South Florida, the Nova Southeastern Medical College, et cetera. Dr. Patel's overall vision includes developing the 27 acres that is north of our school campus, giving us another significant multimillion-dollar investment opportunity in the city of Temple Terrace. We believe it will be an immense addition and benefit to the city of Temple Terrace, providing an array of opportunities, including employment. We are requesting the council to convene a workshop in the near future to allow us to make a deeper presentation to the council on our proposed project. We would love to collaborate with the city of Temple Terrace on various matters and would like to partner with the city to solve some of the challenges the property in question faces, such as FDOT issues and access to Fowler. We look forward to hearing from you and collaborating with you. Our common goal is making the city an engine for further economic growth and development. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Nice to meet you. Any others? Okay, in that case, we have no communications or petitions, nothing on the consent agenda, and so we'll move forward to the second public hearing for the ordinance 1506, adopting voluntary annexation. And I understand Gus Carpus will speak to us tonight. Thank you, Mr. Carpus.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. What we do have here is the second reading for the voluntary annexation for folio numbers Now, I understand why the mayor didn't like reading all those. The property owner is Citrus Assets LLC, and applicant is Cullen Enterprises LLC. The property is south of Temple Terrace Highway, west of Davis Road, and north of Harney Road. There are four parcels that are being looked at, the annex into the city, containing approximately 49.5 acres. The existing zoning is in Hillsborough County. It's PD 07-1784. We're looking to change the zoning, and that's going to be coming up in future meetings, the planned development, PD. Here's an aerial of the property. You see the subject property. To the west, you've got some vacant property. You've got Amazon there. To the east, to the south, you have the dairy. It's kind of hard to read for me. On the north, you have a church. So you have different uses around there. The Development Review Committee, the DRC, has reviewed the request and determined that the proposed annexation would not negatively impact the city's levels of service or personnel. The Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission has reviewed the request and has no objection and feels it is consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. The city council did approve the first reading of the ordinance, ordinance 1506, at their July 8, 2021, meeting. And staff does recommend the council approve the second reading of ordinance 1506 for the annexation of the subject properties. I stand for any questions, and the applicant is here.
Do we have anyone from the public who would like to ask questions? Make a comment? Council, any questions? No questions? In that case, I close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the voluntary annexation of four parcels of certain real property totaling 49.5 plus minus acres, lying within the unencumbered area of Hillsborough County and located south of Temple Terrace Highway, west of Davis Road, and north of Harney Road, legally described in Exhibit A, attached heretofore and made part thereof, redefining the corporate boundaries of the city to include the annexed areas, providing severability and effective date, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
Thank you. If acceptable, I entertain a motion to approve.
To adopt ordinance 1506 for the voluntary annexation of the aforementioned folio numbers.
You want to say all those zeros?
Nope.
I have a second. Mr. Chambers? Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Thank you. We have your ordinance. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a resolution approving the city's updated comprehensive emergency management plan.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Ian Kemp, your fire chief. I stand before you to present a resolution to approve the city's updated comprehensive emergency management plan, also known as the CEMP. Fire Department recently contracted with Disaster Strategies and Ideas Group, LLC, DSI, to assist the fire department with updating the entire comprehensive emergency management plan. It is recommended that this document be updated within five years of the last revision. Our last revision for the CEMP was not until 2012 was the last revision, so we were a few years behind. The fire department has evolved and received suggestions and ideas from each city department, directory, and the department within during this process. During this update, we received guidance and assistance from both staff and DSI. When rewriting the CEMP, we utilized the latest practices and newest emergency management procedures. The result is our new 2021 CEMP. It is recommended by fire department staff that the city council adopt the resolution approving the newly updated city comprehensive emergency management plan.
Thank you. Anyone who would like to make a comment from the audience? Any questions from council? When the directors were, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When the directors were looking over what you already have in place, did those things, did any of those items surface and therefore they were changed?
Oh, a lot.
Lots of changes?
Oh, absolutely. They were, they were, they were not, I should have said it differently, they were part of the process. So they were required to get back to me in a certain amount of time to make suggestions, changes within their particular, within their particular world, ESF, I should say, and then also look at the document holistically. And they did that. And then after this, we also had a scenario, about a half-day scenario, where they came in and all the directors were on, and we talked through different scenarios, and also that was their last chance to make some improvements. And if they had any further questions, they were able to do that at this time. So it was a very inclusive process, which this document needs to be.
You know, reading through it, it's.
It's a difficult read.
Well, it is, but not knowing, you know, I didn't, I wasn't looking at the two side by side, so that's why I had a feeling that all those eyes on it, that there had been some.
Yeah, it's written completely different than it was before. It was suggested, we actually kind of paralleled a lot with Plant City did, they just recently contracted with them as well. And it was more, we feel it's more user-friendly. It's a lot different than it was before. So what happens for the last eight years, people were used to that document, and now we've, we didn't change the responsibilities. A little bit we did, for the right reasons. We just changed the way that it reads.
Okay, well, it was extremely comprehensive, I can tell you. Thank you very much for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
If acceptable, I entertain a motion to approve the city's updated comprehensive emergency management plan.
Move to approve, the second. Yes, approve, and the comprehensive plan, seconded awful fast.
Second?
You're good.
Mr. Schisler? All right, any other discussion? In that case, I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Can I just say something about Elsa real quick?
You may, absolutely.
I just want to thank all the department directors, inclusively, for their help during Elsa. Everybody was on task. I also want to thank the city manager. He had to go out of town for personal reasons, and he felt confident enough in myself, Chief Albano, and the rest of the staff to carry on. So I appreciate that support and vote of confidence, and everybody did a great job. And let's really hope that that's the last one that comes through this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we move on. A resolution approving an amendment to the ABM Guaranteed Energy, Water, and Wastewater Performance Saving Contract. I believe Mr. LeBlanc is speaking to us tonight.
We have a resolution to amend the ABM Guaranteed Energy, Water, and Wastewater Performance Saving Contract for an additional $304,664,085 for HVAC replacements and upgrades. Back in March of 2016, the city council approved a Guaranteed Energy, Water, and Wastewater Performance Savings Contract between ABM LLC and the city of Temple Terrace. The agreement included installation of building upgrades and city-owned facilities that produce annual cost savings. All of the HVAC equipment that was beyond useful life in 2016 was replaced as part of the project scope, while remaining HVAC equipment was properly cleaned and tuned to maximize life expectancy and energy efficiency. The building upgrades were installed in 2016, and commencement of the date of the savings guarantee was January 1, 2017. The agreement includes savings guaranteed for 15 years, which is demonstrated each year with an annual reconciliation report. ABM has provided these reports each year according to the terms of the agreement. The most recent update was presented during the council meeting on June 1, 2021, with the actual energy savings for 2020, once again exceeding the savings guarantee. That's four years in a row. The total guaranteed savings in the agreement was for years 1, 4, $409,573. Total savings achieved for years 1 to 4 was $460,824. This agreement also included a GPM Guaranteed Professional Maintenance Agreement on the HVAC equipment. And with this GPM agreement, ABM bore the full responsibility for maintenance and repair of all equipment for a fixed fee. In the event of a failure, ABM completed the repair with no additional invoice to the city. This agreement covers all HVAC equipment in city facilities, including units that were not replaced in 2016. This GPM agreement was for five years, and the term expires September 3, 2021. Many units that were not replaced in 2016 but still guaranteed in the GPM agreement by ABM are now at the end of their life expectancy and need to be replaced, including 12 systems in City Hall. Certain situations, we find it prudent to extend units' life as long as possible and replace units on failure. There are a few key reasons why the HVAC system should be replaced at the same time in city facilities right now. The 12 systems servicing the main areas of City Hall have condensing units on the roof that will require a crane and potential parking lot disruption each time one is replaced. If we do them all at once, the total cost and disruption will be minimized. ABM will also be installing necessary roof stands, attachments, and electrical work to ensure compliance with current building code and hurricane standards. Additionally, there are certain enhancements available in the HVAC systems that will make the units eligible for CARES Act funding. In the proposed amendment, the enhancements will be installed with the new units needed at City Hall and other buildings and added on to existing HVAC systems to provide enhancement to clean air quality in all city facilities. This procurement is straightforward with the ability to purchase additional needs, which was contemplated in the original agreement. Schedule D includes a rate schedule for changes to the contract's scope. And the total cost for equipment replacement and upgrade in the amount of $304,664,085 for each facility in the city is as follows. City Hall total cost $190,512,36. The Recreation Center, $62,624,69. The Temple Terrace Library is $18,503,3. Lightfoot Center, $15,558,89. Fire Station 1, $3,963,88. Fire Station 2, $8,159,65. The Public Works Complex, $2,874,4. And the water treatment plant is $2,468,31. It's recommended that city council approve a resolution amending the ABM Guaranteed Energy, Water, and Wastewater Performance Savings Contract for additional $304,664,085 to purchase these units and upgrades with pricing that was established in the original agreement in March 15, 2016, using the CARES Act funds. And I may add that as the facilities manager, ABM is the right people to do this. They recently did, not only being a low bidder, but showed up before we got off the phone. So that's our recommendation.
Thank you very much. You had a lot to say, and you would think that $304,000 would be the most important thing. But absolutely, letting us know where all of that money is going is more important. Do we have any comment from the public? All right, council, do you have any questions for Mr. LeBlanc? Or I see we have ABM representatives here, they could answer any questions. Meredith?
I was wondering, is all of it going to be covered by the CARES Act funding or just a portion of it?
The total expenditure qualified is for from CARES Act funding.
Okay, thank you.
James, Mr. Chambers? I'm sorry.
That partially was my question too, but how much, how much of the work that we're doing is simply to, pardon, let me back up, let me back up. Is this additional CARES money, or is this going to gobble up to 2.9 million?
This will come out of the 2.9 million.
2.9, so we have to use that in order to, okay. All right, then that effectively indicates my other question, is how much of this are we doing just to gobble up CARES money? How much of this is needed, and how much of this is really kind of feels-good stuff? And that's just an academic question. Probably? 304, we need it all, okay. All right, that's all I had, that's good.
We can probably run through the next five years of and date approaches to this.
No, I'm not suggesting that, I'm not suggesting that at all.
Mr. Chambers?
Okay, thank you. I don't really have a question on the purchase, all the additional air conditioning units. I'm really happy with that. I think it's a great, a great way to use our money and get that done. My question, as you mentioned in the, that the GPM, the Guaranteed Professional Maintenance Agreement, expires September 30 of this year. Does that go back to negotiation, or, I mean, bid, or how's that? What happens at September 30, and especially if these projects aren't done?
These projects will be contracted with them under an agreement, separate agreement, to do this work before the end of the year, all right, when CARES Act money has to cease and get audited, basically. I don't think it really affects the current contract, because we're extending and modifying the contract. But we don't intend to, and ABM is aware of it, we don't intend to continue with the energy performance contract anyway. We're going to let it expire.
Okay.
We're okay.
All right.
Mr. Schisler?
I did have one other comment, and I apologize, I didn't say it earlier. I remember back in 2016 when the ABM issue first arose, and I liked it back then, thought it was aggressive, but I liked it. But you guys have done what you said you're going to do, and that is very impressive, and there's, you just, you just did it. So that's, that's good, and we thank you. And I know that a lot of the citizens of Temple Terrace may not, may not know what you did and how you came in and really saved a lot of, a lot of issues that we had Band-Aids on. So thank you from up here. It's a great job, and we're glad to continue working with you for however long we do. Thank you.
Any other comment? I agree. When I first came on and they took me on the doom and gloom tour, I didn't want to breathe when I was in some of those spaces. And as you know, I mean, you came in, you fixed it, and it wasn't just air conditioning systems, tremendous difference in our lighting all around, which definitely changed the security level, especially at places like the Family Rec Center and this building and others. So I, too, sing your praises. So if you want to, if you want to use this recording for your next project, you know, if you need, if you need somebody to say, "We vouch for you," I'm a believer. You have another comment, Mr. LeBlanc?
Yeah, let me add, if you look at this list from 1 to 8, that's, we didn't just throw those buildings out there, that's, they've been evaluated, that's worse the first. So with City Hall, and then the traffic at the rec center with the amount of people, we didn't just cherry pick the list, that's worse the first. That's, that's the succession we want to go in there.
Thank you for pointing that out. I think that's helpful for the people watching to know.
Yeah, this building is.
It's complicated, there's a lot to go on.
It's worse.
Yeah, okay. You ready?
I'm ready.
All right, do I have any other comments, questions, discussion? If acceptable, I entertain a motion approving the amendment to the ABM contract.
You can approve.
Mr. Schisler? Ms. Abel? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, gentlemen. Go forth and bring more air conditioning into our system. Council business, any old business? Yes, no? No old business? Okay, new business?
Something that I wanted to make council aware of regarding Hart. Mr. Stevenson and I have had a couple of meetings with the CEO of Hart and the route planning group, if you will, and primarily to make sure that they were up to speed with what we got going on around here, particularly with Amazon. And while I don't know the specific details yet of where it's going to be located, they're installing a loading pad in front of, a bus stop pad in front of Amazon, they're not sure exactly where it's going to be yet, but they're very interested to hear the availability of getting, they're rerouting 48 to accommodate that. And they're still working on it, it'll be announced in August what the final routing will be, just about the time that Amazon should be opening up for business. And that'll be in place for not only Amazon, but the annexed, the parcels we just annexed tonight, they'll be available for them, as well as M&amp;B Dairy, as well as the industrial park, which when that road is completed, that'll be another conduit for the bus system. Not sure if they're going to go down in there, that's, that's a very tight, might be a tight fit for them. But no, they've been very, very responsive. But no, they've been very responsive and working with us, and we've been brought up about redevelopment, and we're trying to connect with Hart slash USF to, because the 6 bus goes through there, and we've got to figure, you know, we're working on a way to maybe take the 6 bus through to the apartments. We'll have to wait and see. That may be a little more aggressive, but that's down the road. But Hart's working with us to accommodate the redevelopment and everything else that we have going on here, which is...
What about Boys and Girls Club? Are they going to service that?
Yeah, they go right, uh, let me see. No, they go down Harney. It goes down, it just misses it. Not enough demand at this point, that something that we'll have to see what's happening going down the road.
You may want to have a conversation with the Boys and Girls Club because that was something they were counting on, and then we lost that route, so...
Yeah, when the route went away. Trying to figure out, but we'll have to talk, we'll look into that, but we'll go back to the planning group for it.
All right. Mr. Chambers, anything?
I have a couple things. The first one is about the FLC conference. I guess it was the last meeting we voted for the mayor to represent us, and I think he wanted us to make sure we discussed all the items that we wanted to have him vote on while he's serving in that role. So I'm not sure if it's anything other than what we've discussed before, but I just wanted to make sure we had a chance to talk about it.
And you're my introduction to my, what I was getting ready to say. Ms. Shon and I attended the Policy Committee last week, and at that conference, the two committees that we serve on voted, one, on their legislative priority, and the second would be one that they are definitely aware of and support. Even though they presented us with six different items, the committee, after much discussion, it was robust discussion, the priority for the Municipal Administration Committee is short-term rentals because considering what just happened with home-based businesses, short-term rentals, we can't take our eye off the ball. And then the second one was cybersecurity, asking the state to, you know, help us protect ourselves. The third item, they agreed that they would be sending lots of information about it, and I think I mentioned it before, it's the giving us the ability to actually determine if people can smoke in our parks. Right now, we have no, if it's outdoors, you can smoke. We are not allowed to designate smoking areas. And there's a lot of concern out there about, you know, kids, all that secondhand smoke in the middle of baseball games, softball games, whatever. So those are the ones that my committee voted on, and so I've sent everyone a copy of the entire packet. You want to skim, keep skimming until you get toward the back where you'll see each of the, not only will you see the item itself, but an explanation of what the proposed wording will be for our support. That just went out today, so you probably didn't have time. So if that, so anybody has any questions on those, I mean, they seem to be so obvious, right? Short-term rentals. We still have no control over it. And at the next meeting in August, we will basically wordsmith our method of trying to get people to be engaged. And as I mentioned at the town hall meeting, we are putting to, FLC is putting together a citizen-led method to get to your legislators and to tell them how important it is and how it affects you. And if it's not affecting you, then, you know, it sounds like, well, if it's not bothering me, what's the big deal? However, it is making a huge impact in communities all over Florida. So we'll be hearing more about that. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Shon because she also was at a different committee than I'm in.
Yes, I attended the Land Use and Economic Development Committee. We had discussed, our main topics we discussed were CRAs, annexation, and home-based businesses. Our legislative priority became economic development, and our policy position was annexation. So those are the two areas that our committee is going to work on. There was quite a bit of discussion about home-based business, and many cities had missed the boat on doing anything about short-term rentals, and so they were very concerned about that not happening to them with regard to home-based businesses. Because if the business starts operating and then we create an ordinance or change an ordinance, it will be much harder or even impossible to then deal with that. So it would be better to, and everybody's trying to look into the future as to what could happen, and then, you know, trying to come up with ordinances to deal with all the potential problems. Because you can imagine any business that exists out there may end up next door to you in a residential neighborhood. So what do you do to lessen or prevent the negative impacts that may occur? So I had asked, I don't, the committee, and I'm sure your committee is the same, the committees are made up primarily of council members and mayors, but there are also other staff with the cities there, and I think I was one of the few actual attorneys on our committee. But I had asked the committee chair if he could speak to the attorneys who work for the Florida League of Cities to come up with some model ordinances, suggested ordinances for our, everybody's city to consider, instead of everybody working separately trying to solve this problem. This all went into, this new legislation went into effect July 1, and despite the fact that our city, along with many others, objected and passed resolutions and wrote letters to our representatives and to the governor saying, "Please don't adopt this bill." It happened anyway, the governor signed it, and so that's the way it is. So I'm hoping that we can, we'll be considering some new ordinances soon to help prevent any problems from arising because of this, so...
So will you be sending this to all of the council members so that they can read?
Oh, yes. Yes, soon, I'm hope, you know, there's no guarantee I am going to get something, but I communicate regularly on a listserv with other city and county attorneys where we share information, and everybody's aware of this. So if we don't get something from the Florida League, I think this other smaller group of attorneys, local government attorneys, they're going to start coming up with things very soon, so...
But I also would like for you to send everyone the packet that you received from your committee so that we can see
Okay.
what it is that we're supporting or not supporting.
I can do that.
Right, okay. Thank you. Ms. Abel?
Yes, I had something else. New topic, is that okay?
Everybody okay on that?
I just have one other, one question related to that. What other topics were there that didn't make the list?
Let's see here. Virtual meetings, municipal elections, because the legislature has decided that if you're, they want us all to be elected at certain times, and some cities elect every year, and some cities, because of the way their board, their councils are made up. And so it would change charters all over the state. I'm sure that Ms. Mooney hears about that at her meetings as well. Right. So that was one of them, and then there's smoking. And then there, but like I say, those didn't generate as much interest as the obvious ones, the short-term rentals.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you for asking that. Yes, go ahead.
I know it's our priority, and specifically Mayor Ross's priority, to make sure that we have safe biking paths from here all around, but especially to USF. And I received an email, and you all probably did too, from a gentleman who was side-swiped by a side mirror, and I engaged him a little bit in some conversation about what he was hoping for, and you all probably have some more context about this than I do. But I was wondering, what can we do soon to help with bicycle safety? Because I know that this is something that, you know, I had a friend 10 years ago who died when she was struck by a bicycle, and this is something that I just don't want to happen to anybody else ever again. So do you all know, like, what we might be able to do in the immediate future about bicycle safety?
I'll let the city manager answer that because he did answer my email today about that same subject.
The, after receiving your email, Madam Mayor, I contacted Mr. Tinch, and he is already engaged his staff to start looking at that section of roadway on 53rd. It is our road. We are responsible for that. We can certainly put up some signage. We can certainly paint some share the roads, sharrows in the road. I mean, there are things that we can do immediately, especially in that section of road. As far as the whole city, we do have a lot of concerns with a lot of our streets, and we do our best to make it as apparent as we can to share the road. Unfortunately, we have some people that don't like to share the road, like Mr. Seigres has alluded to in his email to us. We can take a look at certainly any suggestions that council may have or public may have. We certainly can take a look at doing whatever we can. I mean, we're not limited to what we can do. Again, we control our roads, but there is some standards that we have to follow. But if we have specific cases or specific areas that need to be looked at, please let us know.
And I reached out to Julie Bond from Cutter, and she's offered to help us do a needs assessment of that road. So, I mean, and like you, she said it's something that we should do right away. We need to respond. So I was appreciative of the response from the city manager and Mr. Tinch, so that was helpful to know that they're looking, and I let Mr. Seigres know. Is that okay? All right, good. Any other? Yes, Mr. Chambers?
I do. If you had the opportunity to watch a couple TV stations last week, you saw Temple Terrace very prominent on Channel 13 and Channel 10. Lori, thank you for your work. I know you worked really, really hard on this. City manager, thank you. Charlie Belcher was, from Channel 13, was here two days. Wednesday, he was promoting Florida College, but their Broadway Comes to Camp program, which is an excellent program. And then Thursday, he was promoting our Temple Terrace Buddy Baseball program, and that was good. And then, of course, Friday was Good Morning Temple Terrace from redevelopment, ending with the ribbon cutting of the Chase Bank. It was pretty good. I actually had some people call and said they saw a bunch of us on TV. I understand, because I was on the 850 segment for the Buddy Baseball, I understand that was the lowest-rated segment he had. I'm not sure if that's a coincidence or not. But anyway, it was good publicity for the city. If you saw the whole shows, it really makes you want to live here, which we do, so... Anyway, thank you, all the staff that worked hard on that, and all the volunteers and all the different clubs that were represented. Thank you.
I agree. I agree, and thank you. You're right. Somebody has to be, in this case, the woman behind the curtain, and I'm sure that was Ms. Hayes, because she was almost everywhere with that camera. I don't know how you did that, so thank you again. All right. City managers' report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had three things to report on, and one was Action News. Thank you. And thanking all the staff. Certainly with the other one, the other thing I wanted to mention was that Ian Kemp also stole my glory with thanking everybody on Elsa. I don't know that I'll be out of town during another storm because I think I worried more being out of town than I was if I was here. But the kudos and the thanks go out to your entire staff that took care of business. I communicated back and forth a couple of times, and every time it's like, "We got it, we got it, we got it." I can tell you this, that your entire staff in every single department from top to bottom takes emergency management very seriously. They do a tremendous job. I can't say enough about them. I'm sorry they didn't need me, but it kind of made me feel good that they knew what they were doing. So again, thanks goes out to all the staff. And Action News, that was a great, great production that Lori was able to put together, and certainly we've got a lot of things happening. Starbucks has now put their signs up to let you know. AT&amp;T has got signs up. We're looking for the restaurant down there is in the middle of interior finishes. So we've got a lot of activity going on. The apartments finally got some siding in, so they've started to side those buildings, or at least the first building. And the shortage of material really is affecting our ability to get things done, but I know they're happy about it as well as us. So we anticipate kind of getting a, maybe a grand opening for the whole shopping center here sometime in the near future as things start opening up. I've only got one other thing, and I'll ask Brian to kind of cue this up. Our marketing folks have put together a little video that I'd like to show and kind of close things out with, so... Brian? I will take a couple of minutes and thank leisure services again for putting together that whole thing. A bunch of departments are involved with the 4th of July in the parade. It is a tremendous amount of work, but again, your staff outdoes themselves every year. It was a tremendous evening, I think, for everybody, and I've gotten a lot of comments from the public on how great that was. So again, thanks to staff.
Well, when Mayor Ross said to us, as we were debating whether or not we were going to be willing to walk in the rain, there are people out there, and they've come to watch a parade, and we're going to give them a parade. So we were like, "Okay, let's go." And, you know, once you're wet, you're wet. And, you know, once you're wet, you're wet, so...
You're wet from the drink. So, you're wet from the drink, not wet from sweat?
Nope, exactly. And the next day, it was extremely hot. So, if I have my druthers, I'd go in the rain any day, so... I'm just kidding, Lori. Make it beautiful next year.
That was an excellent event, again, with the party department to put on.
I know, I really felt bad that the staff had to go from planning a wonderful event to filling sandbags within the same week, but they seemed to have pulled it off with, and I, like you, I was out of town, totally off the grid, so I had no idea what was happening. It was very nerve-wracking to not be around, so... But I was confident in the staff. I knew they were going to do what they could do. So, any others? Any other comments?
No, that's all.
You sure? You look like you had a thought there.
I'm sorry?
You're good?
Yeah.
You finished? Okay. All right. If there's no other business to come before the council, besides the city attorney, I apologize.
I have just two things. Just wanted to mention that the deputy city attorney and I attended the Florida Municipal Attorneys Association two-day seminar the week before last in South Florida. This was just two intense days of legal education, dealing with municipal issues. So, that was very helpful. They had provided a legislative update on, and I can provide everybody with a copy of that. I'll provide it to the different departments too, because different things impact different departments and everybody. I'm sure they keep up on their own, but in case they, you know, are not fully aware of what has happened in Tallahassee, I'm going to distribute that. The other thing is, I wanted to let you know that our parking enforcement hearings are going to recommence next Wednesday. So, as you may recall, once the red light cameras had been removed and those hearings ended, our parking ticket hearings also ended. And so, there was no method of enforcement for parking tickets or to dispute your parking ticket. There was no place for recipients of a ticket to go to really complain or present their defense. So, council had approved some revisions a few meetings ago to our code that dealt with parking, and as part of that created the hearing officer procedures. We had a training session this week with one of our hearing officers, Mr. Ritter, and he's going to be presiding over our first hearing next Wednesday. So, and then earlier today, we met with the person who's going to be the clerk from the police department. So, instead of Cheryl or her staff having to do this, the, an individual from the police department is going to be the clerk, and I believe that's the way it was done before as well. So, we had a dry, we kind of had a dry run earlier today to get everybody prepared and to hopefully work out some of the bugs. And we've made the decision that police are used to presenting tickets, they're used to presenting their cases. We did not think, the legal department didn't think that they needed any help in getting up and presenting their ticket. So, instead, the legal department will be acting as, you can't do both jobs, so we had to make a decision. We'll be acting as the advisor to the hearing officer. So, that's how we're going to be conducting this.
Lot of information. Thank you. Okay, now, in, yes?
I just want to clarify, is that starting tomorrow or next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, not tomorrow. I believe it's next Wednesday. Oh, is it tomorrow? Oh, okay. Then, all right. You might be right.
About televised?
So, they're not televised. So, all right, tomorrow.
Temple Terrace's court TV. Okay. I'm glad we got that cleared up. All right. Nowhere the business to come before this council. I consider this meeting adjourned.